Commission meeting. Twenty seventh. First item, adjustment of agenda, and I would like to make a request. We do have a visitor tonight, Don Stewart. I would like to move that up to be the next item on the agenda. And I think if everybody's okay, I think technically I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? So, Don Stewart is, uh, has been selected by the North Station Building Replacement Committee to try to bring the project to the finish line, as I understand it, project director. And he just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, uh, address the planning commission, give us a quick recap of where the project's at schedule, uh, moving forward. So, it's all yours, Don.
Thanks, Andy. Andy, I really appreciate you giving me a few minutes at the beginning. I won't take long. I've lived in North Hero for twenty-three years, so I'm a relative newcomer. So, um, I ran a construction company for about thirty-five years, still around. She worked at Alberg right now, I'm with other things. Have you all seen these schematics of what the, uh, these lovely pictures of what the? I will pass these around. Uh, anybody who wants one is more than welcome to keep one. Um, these are, uh, uh, rendering, uh, roughly what the two buildings are going to look like, I've seen them. So, we have, uh, we have two buildings that we're doing. We're doing a new town garage and we're doing a new fire station. As you well know, if there's anybody else, we all. Uh, as you well know, our building that we have used for the town garage and the town fire station for fifty-two years is beyond decrepit. Um, and it can no longer in any way house the amount of equipment or the type of equipment that is now being used in firefighting. It's been a very unique situation in that the, the town of North Hero has paid very little for fire protection for eighty years. Almost all the money that is raised for the operation of the fire department, including the, the, uh, the buying of equipment and they just got a new pumper which cost five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The payment for all of these things, all comes from the volunteers themselves raising money. They are not paid. They are, everything they do is volunteers. It's these, it's the volunteer, the fourteen or fifteen volunteer fire people and the auxiliary that has raised the money to run the fire department for eighty years. So, Grand Isle and Alberg contribute tremendous amounts of money to the running of their fire departments. We do not, the, the town, yeah, has a line out in budget of thirty thousand dollars that goes in. Every other dollar to operate the fire department is raised by the volunteers. So, we come to a place now in the, in the history of the town where we need a fire department, we need a proper fire station. So, we, Bob Konekko started working on this, uh, local architect about five years ago. In, uh, excuse me, about seven years ago, it has been through a number of permutations. The town select board asked me if I would steer the project through the design phase, the fundraising and the construction, uh, the, the bidding and the construction phase, and I agreed to do that. Um, it's right in the, i- in the wheelhouse of what I did for years at Stewart Construction where I worked on both the design and the, uh, and the, the planning and all the permitting and everything else. Good news is, our permitting is basically done. We have a good set of starting drawings. They're not complete bid documents, but they're good solid drawings. We, uh, we are going to hire, we have, we have an engineer on board, we're going to be hiring an architect. The architect will fill out the plan. So, we have two complete buildings. We'll have all the site work done, we'll have all of the other, all the other internal and external, external infrastructure in one place. Those drawings will go out for bid in November to contractors. By the end of November, we will have prices back. In December, we plan to get a contractor on board. We're going to give them a ramp up of December through March, um, to get ready. And come March fifteenth, old building comes down, two new buildings go up by Thanksgiving. Of next year, we will have a new town garage and a new town fire department. Yeah, so it is, it is, uh, and tomorrow, you, you're saying, and this is going to be paid for by magic? It's going to be paid for by fundraising? That's where it's going to start, and that starts in earnest tomorrow. There are a number of people, uh, in the, uh, in the local community who'll be getting this wonderful brochure that Mike Murdock made up called Raise the Ladder, has all the information in it. This is going out to people, starting a, 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 a group of people who are, we consider to be basically the people who could really be direct donors for this, and they're going to get a copy of this. And they're going to go talk to them, and we're looking for superheroes, super, superstars to make major contributions to, towards our town garage. In the middle of the month, there's going to be a flyer that's going to go out to everybody on the grand list. And over the next several months, there will be things done through, uh, the Islander. There'll be things done through Front Port Forum, there'll be a number of mailers that will go out, there will be other, uh, sort of direct appeals to people and, and knocking on doors, and we're going to get our new fire, we're going to get our new fire engine out and get it displayed and it's going to say, look, you know, we need to do home. So, we're, we're going to make sure the public, both all of us who live here and just as a reminder, the people who fight fires at your house are your neighbors. People who fight fires here are our neighbors. This is our, this is our house, it's our town. And we, I feel really strongly about this because these people are volunteer tremendous amounts of time. They go through extensive training, they work here, they work all through our county. They work in Swanton, they work in New York, they actually work in Canada. They're all, they're, uh, they're, these, these, these groups are all work, work together on the, basically on the size of the fire needed. They, they all fight fires together. It's, it's mutual. Thank you, I can never get that right. Mutual, they have mutually, so. This is going to be front and center in our, in our desire to get people aware to fundraise. We'll raise as much money as we can. Come September, there, there will be a bond. The bond obviously will be designed to cover the costs so that we don't do my fundraising. They raised, you know how much money they raised for this building? Anybody know?
It was significant, was it? A million dollars?
One point seven million dollars for this building. Or now, they had a long period of time, but they raised one point seven million, and they have a contingency fund that continues to operate to keep this building up. Extraordinary, but this is North Hero. This is the kind of stuff that we can go, this is North Hero, we could do this. I have not a shred of doubt that we can raise a significant amount of money towards this, and we can pass a bond to get this done. So, uh, you've got these, this information, there will be a public information, there'll probably be more than one. I expect you'll see some, uh, published events that we're going to do. And we're going to get this in front of people, and, uh, with all expectation, by September, we'll have our money in place. We'll be moving towards getting ready to put the project out for proper bid. And by March fifteenth of next year, we will break ground and be, uh, be done by a year from this Thanksgiving. So, that's it, I won't take up any more of your time.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Don, what, I know you, you're going to put it out to bid, so you don't, um, first of all, I think this community is going to be a full, full support on this one. Um, there's no doubt about that. I've heard lots of really positive things, but what's, I, I know it's, it's going to go out to bid, but what, what would be your estimate of the cost of this? And then, um, in a bond, um, a bond would be the kind of the replacement of whatever you can fundraise first, and then the bond is the remaining, whatever it is.
Eh, except that, very interestingly, so we're doing this, we're doing the town garage and the fire department as one project. Um, as, as Andy would tell you, uh, progressive projects are horrendous on the general conditions, the costs it takes to run the project. So, we are pushing these two projects together. The town has about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in their coffers towards the, uh, town garage. That money is set aside for the town garage. I think it's around eighty-eighty, it's in that name. Which is a majority of the money that is needed to build the town garage itself. The, um, the, my current estimate is the project will cost somewhere between four and four point five million dollars, all in. So, we have a significant nest egg, we raised money. I am not even going to guess at this point the size of the bond, but we'll know before too long about, you know, we'll get a sense of in our fundraising, how much money we need and how much money we, how much way we're going to collect and how much money we need to raise. So, uh, that will be all published, uh, this, the first letter that goes out to everybody on the grand list is going to be this lovely sort of postcard-y thing with pictures on it, it will have a lot of, uh, it'll have a lot of this information sort of on the front, and really, it's a really broad appeal, but it's mostly to let people know. The second mailing, we're going to get more details in there about, we're going to answer questions, we'll put details in there about just the question you asked is, how is the money going to actually come together? We'll answer those questions in the second one. First one, we just want you to know, this is coming, please help us. Um, so that's about all I can tell you now, because I don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but I had a pretty good idea. I've had two estimates done. Mike Murdock had asked with done the fire station, which came out to about two point eight million dollars. So, if you take the two point eight million and the roughly nine hundred thousand dollars that will, for the two buildings that are estimated at this point. And then you had the site work, which is all the work, the horizontal work that has to be done, Andy's own, uh, area of expertise. You've got all sorts of things that have to happen horizontally on the project, including taking the old building down, the, the grading, the paving, the, 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 the water work, the septic work, all those things have to.
But the septic was already in.
The line, the pump station exists on Joe Paquette's property. The force main comes to the back end of the property that they, that has been bought, so that's done. The mound's done, but there's still a very significant amount of work that, there's some, uh, one of the things required for this is, there's some very specialized tanks and pumps that are needed, but yes, you're right, part of the septic system is done. To, again, to our benefit, and we don't have to build a salt shed. Because the town of North Hero has a great relationship with the state, and basically we use the state's facility as a salt shed. Salt shed would run somewhere between half a million dollars up, um, and we don't have to build one. So, we're in an, again, it's a very advantageous situation. Okay, I've talked too long. Unless there's other questions, I will.
Just point, if anybody wants to see more detail, there are some drawings downstairs, and I have a set of drawings as well. They're, like Don said, they're pretty well along, if anybody wants to see more detail.
We're, we're going to start putting up downstairs when our, when I, we kick off in earnest tomorrow on fundraising. We're going to be putting downstairs, um, big poster boards with this information on them. And we'll get the, we'll get, when we, when we have a little better definition on the, uh, floor plans, we'll get that up down there. We'll, we'll, that, that will be on the, there, there, the, the, the volunteer fire department website and the town website. We'll get all this information out as fast as we can, as efficiently as we can. Um, a lot of those things just go right by people, they just don't, it's hard for people to look at something in two dimensions and understanding in three dimensions. Um, that would not be a problem with this particular group, but for general, people have a hard time thinking about what's.
When do you propose going with bond?
September.
To September.
It'll be standalone bond, that'll be the only thing, the plan is that will be the only thing that will be voted on. And I have already arranged for a, uh, a snowstorm to occur on that day. So, there's only going to be three voters, me and two of you, we're going to vote, yes, all done, we just need a second majority. So, I'm counting on you to help in that situation. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Don, appreciate it.
Nice to meet you all, if I hadn't met you or see you again.
Okay. Next item, um, confirming time for future meetings. Uh, this was a special case and changing to six o'clock tonight, but last month, the question came up, would we consider, uh, making our meetings earlier, maybe at six o'clock? Uh, so I'm going to open that up for discussion, just for, uh, and if it's go, if it's going to be a hardship for anybody, as far as I'm concerned, that's the end.
Never know where I'm going to be.
Uh, I mean, does six thirty work? Would that work?
I like seven.
Seven, I guess. Seven works the best for me, too.
You know, well, we can, uh, have the vote, that, that far as I'm concerned, if it's going to be a hardship for you two guys, we'll, we'll stick with seven, so. Um, well, I guess we, we'll move on from that, no action necessary. Uh, okay, approval of minutes of the April meeting.
And I'm sorry, I did not include them in your packet, but I can share the screen if you want to see them.
I have a copy.
You have a copy?
Yeah, they were on the website.
They were, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and?
Share.
About there, just. Those people hadn't had a chance to look at them.
That's expensive building. Uh, that's an expensive building.
Well, it's two buildings.
Yeah, I understand. I don't, I don't know what's going on. Meeting lamps, you know, someone's going to have to pay some cost.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to be looking hard about it, I think.
Well, they also don't have nothing paying materials.
That's the, yeah. It's just skyrocketed. Is it? That's good to hear.
Well, it's, you don't know, I mean, I, I mean, it's more, isn't it, don't we get a lot of lumber from Canada?
Yeah, anyway, uh, so.
I move that we approve the minutes of the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we've taken care of the, I guess, the public comments and the visitors. Uh, so zoning recap report. One, one big one there, Danielle.
One big one, yeah.
My neighbor Jared's got quite the project.
Yes, he does have quite the project, but that was a building permit I issued. I actually went out to the site last summer. Yep. Last summer to take a look at what he was going to do.
Yeah.
It's definitely a big project, um, they're just starting to get underway. It was pretty quiet, a couple of certificates of occupancy, one of them was for a, um, uh, shoreline stabilization, which I still issued the COO because we hadn't yet decided that we were only going to do that for, uh, principal structures. Um, and then there was just a deck and one certificate of compliance for a house that was selling on Bridge Road. That's about it. And there is a copy of the MMA if anyone wants to see it.
But do you have any questions or comments on, you know?
Is this a subdivision that's going to be like four houses?
What?
No, no.
No, it's, he's, no, he's, he's just basically just knocking down and rebuilding the whole house and making a little ADU on the garage. Yeah, he's got the.
Like a one bedroom or something.
Yeah, but he's got like the, it's cantilevered out over the.
Yeah, he, he would never be able to build that from scratch nowadays. If anybody's familiar with it, it's a house that kind of hangs out over the lake.
Yeah, yeah.
Just south of, uh, Camp Ingle.
So, it, it, so it's on the same footprint?
It's a little bit different, but the part that goes over the water is the same footprint, and so that's how he got the shoreline permit.
Yeah, within the first hundred feet of the shoreline, he's in the exact same footprint, so, yeah, that's how we got the state.
Yeah.
So, it's, it looks like it's going to be a five bedroom, it didn't say how many bathrooms. The bill matter.
Yeah, he's got the septic permit, maybe I didn't include it in there.
Yeah, yeah, you can't have, uh, bedroom, you can have, especially bathrooms, so. And so we. Right, yeah, that's right, that's right, and what, it's eight? I think he had occupancy for eight in that house, I'm not sure. So, um. Yeah.
I've never been down.
Yeah.
It's.
First house in on the right.
It's right, it's right on the.
Oh, yeah.
So, the state didn't put any restrictions on him, did, when he permitted, or was there anything?
Well, he had to get a new shoreline permit and.
And a wastewater permit.
Wastewater and.
Uh, shoreline state, he did some significant state.
Yeah, yes, he did, yeah, he did.
Or, I don't. If they approve that, they will be.
This is the septic permit here.
It's kind of hard for me to.
Five bedroom.
Yeah, there might have been five bedrooms in that whole.
For a five bedroom, this was from, uh, November of twenty.
Yeah, we're going to go out and see if. It's, yeah.
It's interesting, it's right, it's right down on the water by Ducknet East.
You can't go out there?
Well, I don't think he'd have a problem. He, he told me I could go look at it. No, but it's open in the summer. Let me know, Jared invited me to take a look, if you want to look, call me and they'll get it.
It is, it is, you can't just drive out there and do it.
Right, right. Okay. All right, there's nothing else on, uh, zoning activity. Technically, we do have some correspondence that we just got today from Greta, but we'll, we'll go over that when we, uh, review our updates. So, I guess we are now ready, hopefully, to finalize the updates that we've been working on for the last several months. Uh, in the packet, we, uh, Danielle and I got together, kind of consolidated everything into one document. Um, so I, what I'd like to do is have her put it up on the monitor, and let's just scroll through it. I think we've seen everything, I think we've, uh, approved everything, but it's nice to see it all in one place. And I guess hopefully, when you put it on the monitor, you can show the comments we just.
Yeah, they should be there.
Today. Which I haven't even looked at yet.
I know, I, I just got it an hour before the meeting, so.
Is there anything in her comments that contradicts your approvals that we've done?
Can you read them?
A small.
Oh, it's going to be one of those.
Yeah, yeah, look at those in that right hand column, that's her comments. But when, uh, yeah, okay, so, yeah, we can see it better on the screen now, now if you, maybe, yeah, okay, there we go. Okay, so, note where each of these materials can be accessed and found. Include author and date for each publication.
Just question marks, so.
That's a question, yeah, she, that's a suggestion.
And she did say she reserves the rights of further comment on them if there's anything else that's, um.
And just, her, her email got hacked the other day, so she's been kind of out of commission for a while. Uh, okay, so I, I get that one, so she just, uh, I think we should get maybe more specific. Okay, second comment, are there reference materials to each of these practices? Or is this just a list? Good question, I guess I would have to go back to Tom Bristle, because he's the one that came up with this list.
Yep, that was submitted by the shoreline committee.
Club committee, yeah.
Yeah, because those practices could have come out of one of these other sources, yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask, uh, Tom for some clarification there, but you know, it's not something we have to change now, again, I think these are just suggestions from Greta.
Yeah, this is just her, like, I think she just reviewed these today.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Very basic.
So, but other than her comments, I mean, there's everybody, I, again, I think we've seen all this before. And I think we approved it all at one time, so, so let's just keep going. Um, that, uh, the flow chart, again, that was the shoreline subcommittee made the recommendation that we add the, over to the right, um, the uh, state permits that may be required, just as part of the flow, I think we will follow with that. And then, section one point three, two point three, and I think three point one, kind of all with the same change. Again, really just adding reference, specific references to shoreline, wetland, uh, Corps of Engineers permits that may be required.
So, three point one also, yeah.
Yeah, so that, again, I think we were all fine with that. Table five point two, the only thing we did there was add driveways. Yeah. Um, and then five point seven, this ad again came from the shoreline subcommittee. Just basically saying that the, uh, state may consider driveways to be an impervious surface and, and count towards the light coverage, because our, our regulations do not count driveways as part of the light.
I think on that part, it's on what they put on top. If they don't put a Sherpack, it's a pervious surface.
What is Sherpack?
That's the fines.
It's a, it's a, it's a soil that compacts, really.
It should.
Yes, and it does become impervious.
Your rock finds.
Yeah, there are certain types of driveways.
I'm asking because, so we're having just put last year a new.
Plant mix in, basically, they call it.
Yeah.
It's fines, it's your rock finds, and so it hardens your driveway right up.
Yeah.
So, it makes it, uh. Oh, it does, so it's in, okay.
In, in, in general, the state considers gravel driveways to be impervious, but there are certain.
They have.
But anyway, this was just to point out that, uh, yeah, it doesn't really affect our regulations, just that, uh, some, the state may take a look at the driveway coverage, so, again.
There is a comment from Greta there.
Yeah, clarified shoreline protection act may require, North Hero are not requiring, just referencing.
Okay, yeah, that's easy enough, we can, we can make that change. But, yeah, that change is easy to make, and we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. Um, okay, now, the sec, six point four, all of these recommendations came directly from the DRB. And it just, uh, really had to do, but no, excuse me, now, six point five, uh, six point four was ours. We talked about, uh, P, uh, PUD. It's like Greta had no comments, that would be allowed in a land that is in both the shoreline and rural district, so.
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah, and then everything in the shoreline district has, yeah, so.
We, right, you can't build in the shoreline.
Right, so I think, yeah, we all agreed to that, yeah, so six point five. Um, really just clarifications on the submittals and try to make it easier for applicants to get through the process. And maybe you can talk about this a little bit more, Danielle, since you're the DRB clerk.
Let me read it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they basically do this already anyway. Um, this is more just like, I think.
I, yeah, I think what, this is really allowing a draft plat.
Yeah.
Uh, to be part of the review and approval.
Mm-hmm.
And then the final plat, plat comes after the.
Right, and they kind of combine the first couple of hearings, i- it's usually three hearings, but they've been combining the first two and then just doing the final, so this is mostly just to solidify that, I think, what they're already doing.
Okay, so. Yeah, again, we've seen all this before, so if nobody has any comments. Okay, seven point seven, that was, uh, that was something we decided on recently, the driveways. I'll have a minimum with a twelve feet. And then, uh, there'll be a surfaces, and then this, uh, was it seven point eight that we're looking at?
Yep.
Similar to, to the changes we looked at previously. Just specifically referencing this.
Drive height was twelve, not fifteen, right? For a single family.
Right. That was the only one that wasn't stipulated in the bylaws. Yep.
It's a long draft.
Well, my swelty.
You can't meet another vehicle on my ground.
It's wide compared to some of the properties.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Width of this table.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, more or less, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the trucks would have a heart. Yeah, that's what my foot worried of.
Okay, so seven point eight, so, Ken?
Uh, as far as I'm concerned, yeah. Okay, seven point nine, uh, after a lot of discussion, we ended up with a fairly simple change there. Basically got rid of the, limiting the number of temporary signs and the size.
And then eight point twelve, I think, is the last one, the shoreline.
And again, that's, uh, from the shoreline subcommittee, very similar to what we looked at previously.
We did eight seventeen.
Eight point seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, that was ours.
Oh, and Greta has a comment on that, too.
Oh, yeah, uh. Oh, this is zoning permit, not building permit, that's an easy enough change.
Oh, yeah, right there.
Yeah, we can make that change, Danielle. Is this site requirement otherwise required for new single unit homes? I don't know that we have a required. I don't know that we have a requirement.
That that nine hundred square foot requirement is. As far as I am familiar with is only for ADUs.
Yeah. Mike, you I think you did the bulk of the work on this one. You remember where the nine hundred square feet. I don't recall the rationale for. Other than it is the same as an ADU.
Yeah, so the ADU is it's nine hundred square feet or thirty percent of the main house, whichever is larger.
Yeah. So, yeah, this, so if somebody wanted to take an ADU and. Convert it the year round.
But is that saying that I I'm asking as the Z A, is that saying that if someone has a two thousand square foot camp and they wanna. Convert it to year round? Oh, that's minimum.
Yeah, that's minimum of nine.
Oh, it's minimum. Oh, okay. Well, what if they have a two hundred square foot camp?
I mean, if there's septic passes.
Right. So this is saying that it can't, but.
It'd be a tiny. So that was, that's what you're we're saying, is so you're discriminating.
Yeah, you know, I have no problem striking the minimum nine hundred square feet. So we could say the structure shall. Be have habitable floor space, which is suited for Europe. Yeah, I I.
Yeah. Where did that nine hundred square feet come from?
Yeah.
The minimum size for uh maximum size for an ADU.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But no.
Or is it minimum?
Minimum.
Maximum nine hundred or thirty percent of uh.
Yeah, let's strike that.
Okay, we'll strike that, okay.
Okay.
I mean, people are doing that today. They're making their camps into year round.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they haven't been requiring a permit until soon. Ten point two.
Okay, yeah, so that's where the um. There was a discrepancy between the previous section and this one. And uh by striking these two lines, uh we got rid of that discrepancy. Again, you would uh all agreed on that one.
How many lots can a driveway search?
Two. That that's in our current regulations. If it's serving three or more, it becomes a private road. But this this the definition again, that was suggested by the DRB and we did agree on that, so. Uh what did Greta have to think about that? Oh.
She's just asking how many lots the driveway.
Well, that's already addressed.
Yeah.
So now you're like.
Okay, so where I'd like to go from here, I think we're all pretty much happy. We've agreed on a couple of minor tweaks tonight. So I would like to make these changes and move forward with our public hearing. Which we're required to do, and I'd like to schedule that public hearing to coincide with our June meeting. And in order to do that, there's a warning period and um you know, we've got a. We'll have to put it in the Islander. We have to notify adjacent communities, which in our case is Grand Isle and Albert. We need to notify the Regional Planning Commission. We need to modify one of the state uh departments. So if everybody's good with that, uh Danielle and I, over the next week or two, can start putting that all together. Uh again, we'll make these couple of changes. You know, we we still, once we go through the public hearing. We can still uh make additional changes before we turn it over to the select board, should we wish.
I have a question. Before we schedule the public hearing, should we make those little changes and just. Email it out to the board so that they can see like what we've discussed tonight? Okay.
Do we have to be here to uh?
No, no, we'll we'll just uh just if anybody.
Not a meeting if we don't have a forum.
Exactly. So if Danielle sends it out and each of us only responds to Danielle. The doc for the whole group.
Right.
We're we're fine.
But we don't have to.
Warn it and all that, no. And you don't even have to respond. But but yeah, no, yeah, but you if you if you all just respond to me, it's not a meeting.
I mean, I think we've all agreed on what we want to do.
These are small changes.
Yeah, yeah. So uh so that's that'll be our plan then. Uh Danielle and I will uh in in the in the packet, I included the applicable state. Regulations and a few of us have been through this process in the past. So we're kind of familiar with it. So we'll schedule our public hearing.
June twenty fourth.
Yep, and I guess um. You. Warren and Bobby, would you be okay with scheduling the public hearing at six thirty and then regular meeting at seven? We have to keep them separate.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that. And the public hearing may last only five minutes, so you know, or. Maybe maybe something will take on a life of its own here.
Yeah.
But so so we'll uh schedule a public hearing for six thirty and then we'll have our regular meeting at seven. And at our regular meeting, we can uh talk about uh if we did receive any public comments that we think should be addressed. My hope would be that our regular meeting, that we would agree that that we're fine and we're going to turn it over to the select board.
Good.
Block sitting there, so. That's my hope. You know, for hope everybody's okay with that. So I guess I would like to have a motion that we uh. Approve this one document with the couple of minor changes noted tonight.
I'll make it more sensible. We approve what we have just on our minor changes. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bobby, you uh on the fence?
No, no, it's good.
Take that as an aye.
Yeah, aye. Just, yeah.
Okay, good, so that's uh it's good that we're uh getting to the end of that process for. As the planning decision commission is concerned. Okay, uh so let's move on. Certificate of occupancy, and we've had uh several discussions, but um. Danielle and I made an executive decision uh within the past month, I would say. And it's based on our most recent regulations that only require a certificate of occupancy for principal structures. And that kind of went over my head at the time, you know. Historically, you know, whether it's a garage or a shed or whatever, it's still required a certificate of occupancy. Our regulations right now specifically say it's only required for specific, for uh principal structures. So Danielle and I agree that moving forward, we're just gonna issue COOs for principal structures.
Okay.
Makes sense.
What are you gonna do for garages?
They'll still have to get a building permit.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, so. In additions to primary structures also, yes?
Yeah.
To principal structures, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that just want to make sure everybody was aware of that, that change. FEMA flood maps, um you know, Greta was here last month when we asked her about it, and I think she, well, actually Danielle ended up. Sending us a link to the FEMA, which was very hard to follow.
I it was hard to find.
Let me tell you where we are now, um. The uh Regional Planning Commission. Put together a uh map, they extracted the FEMA information, put it on a poster sized map. Which is a copy downstairs. Only for review by town officials at this point. So the it kind of be. Kind of end up being uh people in the right place at the right time. The officials that looked at it were me. Carl Raca, uh Patty LaBounty from the DRB. Kind of fortuitous, she was a real realtor, so she understands what she's looking for in flood maps. Lisa looked at it. And so that we had a deadline of May sixteenth to issue any comments. So we had a few minor comments. I'd say the single biggest thing, just so everybody's aware, the base flood elevation for Lake Champlain. Is now one oh two point four. It was one oh two.
Oh, okay, that's interesting. I I would have thought it would have gone higher.
Yeah, I would have thought that to be a flood.
Yeah, that was one oh three one or something.
You know what? It's funny, they uh they also saw some information where the five hundred year flood level. Is still less than what we experienced in twenty eleven, so that must have been like a thousand year event or something, but.
Yeah, huh, so one or two.
We had another question about people that have all have gotten their uh several different names, letter of map adjustments. Basically, they. They're in a flood zone, but they got a surveyor to to say that their. Floor elevation was above the flood level, so they're exempt from flood insurance. I just got the answers to our response this afternoon. I'll send that out. Uh so then it's. Not, it's gonna be another two years before this is all finalized, something on the twenty twenty seven. There's gonna be a public comment period. I think it said November or something.
Yeah, that's why we can only share the map with town officials.
But we're all official. There is a map downstairs.
So did it affect a lot of properties?
No, not from what I see, when when Carl and I looked at it, I mean, everything looked pretty reasonable. Didn't look like there's anything out of that. There may be some specific properties that are affected. I don't know yet.
Well, that's why that the Lomar and the Loma discussion came up was because we weren't sure if. Those properties that had been issued those had been included.
Yeah.
Or not.
The answer I got, which I'll send to everyone, basically was, yeah, that's gonna be taken into account when they finalize this.
Okay, good, but it had it wasn't yet, but it will be.
Yeah, right.
Good, that's great.
So that's kind of where we are on the FEMA flood maps. So, that's uh the end of new business. So again, we've we've talked about this in the past, about the town plan, and you know, it's been on our. To do list for quite a while that we start looking at it. I think we've kind of all agreed that we. Just to soon pursue updating the town plan, maybe starting this fall, if we can get some grant money to uh hire a facilitator. So uh let's let's get through the uh immediate um item of updating our regulations, get through that process.
Yeah, I have I have something else that I.
Yes, sir.
Put on here, and that's why I talked to you about impact fees. And that kind of goes very along with what Dom's talking about with um. You know, the money that we're spending and fundraising and capital, the capital improvement plan. If we did impact fees, and I've got some, I've done some reading, and Mike Murdoch sent me some, did he talk to you about it?
He mentioned it one time briefly.
He sent me some things about it. I also followed up and found some other things about impact fees, basically. But we ought to put it on.
Yeah, let's put that on the agenda.
The conference, C I P, which was then to be able to, you can't use it for maintenance, you can't use it for. You know, people working or instruction, but you can use it for the fire truck. You can use it for the building, I believe. So what what what's the um what's the gist behind it? Well, an impact fee is basically um you're you're looking for. Impacts on, you know, fire, rescue, police, education, water, I suppose. Um and it's, you know, developers that would pay a fee per residence, per residential unit. Let's just say they paid two hundred dollars plus a certain amount per square foot, like fifteen cents per square foot, so.
Let's let's put that on the agenda. And again, it's it's not up to the planning commission to make that decision. I think it's gonna be up to the select. We can make recommendations.
It is a potential income generator.
Yes.
Okay. And that would feed this.
Cost you that much more to work and build than the stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
Six hundred dollars for a permit.
Yeah, I didn't ask him, but that's the other question I have is whether or not there is any state money. For municipal buildings like this, cuz there has been in the past.
How long you been here?
Well.
How many years you lived here?
In in uh North Carolina?
So you remember ten years ago when we voted? You put money in the highway budget to do this work?
Yeah.
So that's the under grand he's talking about.
Yeah, you guys are in construction. Have you had to pay impact fees anywhere you go? No?
No.
Out of out of the islands.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, probably out of the island, not here.
I think it's worth discussing.
It is, yeah. It's not, because Colchester don't have it on residential.
So.
They do big developments.
Sure.
You don't see any.
Well, that's true.
Well, there's no land to develop like that here anymore.
Not a lot.
It really isn't.
I I agree.
There's no property to do a big development.
Yeah, and last, you remember what Greta was talking about, and I don't think you were here, but I saw that. The 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 core that they want to be doing developments with, you know, neighborhoods and. No, we don't have.
Oh, oh, exactly. Well, David, I'm I'm gonna put you in the lead on this, if you don't mind. You get put. Together the information you've gathered and uh do we want to do it on uh next month's agenda, or we want to just focus on?
We're gonna just focus on.
Yeah, let's focus on the regulation updates and then maybe do that in the July.
Cause we're who knows, we're gonna have to risk, whatever we get.
Yeah, so let's uh put that to the July agenda.
Sounds good.
And then in the meantime, um. Danielle and I will have to get back with Greta or Catherine or whoever to see about applying for grants to help us with the updated town plan.
Can I ask a question? Sorry to interrupt. So could you tell me a little bit about how you see this public meeting going?
Public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, we've we've been through it uh before, and uh it was pretty involved, cuz we we did a major overhaul of the regulations. So we'll we'll warn it um like we warn all of our meetings, and again, because it's a a public hearing for regulation updates. There are additional steps we need to take. Again, notifying the adjacent towns, the state, the Regional Planning Commission. So it it'll be made known to the public that we're gonna have a hearing, so people. And and these, the regulation updates will be um available, hard copy here. They'll be available on the town website. For anybody that wants to look at it. That'll all be noted in the warning, so.
Okay, and so people will have the opportunity at the meeting just to ask, well, is it kind of an open forum?
Yes.
Or, okay, curious, unless it was, I just wondering if it was.
Last time, we had a whole bunch of people, and so we kind of had to limit everybody to two minutes. We'll just, you know, we. We may have very few people. Maybe we won't have any on this. It's hard to say.
So this is Pat, I'm glad you raised that, cuz Andy, what what happens if somebody raises something outside of the adjustments we've made? That's in the plan already, you mean? That's in in the regs that they're they're also upset with and they want some change.
Again, that's we, that's why we're having the public hearing.
Yes.
Maybe based on the comments, we have the option to make changes.
Right, so it's not restricted just to the things, the changes we've made, okay. It's open to the whole.
That's that's the purpose of the public hearing.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, it's open to the whole plan? I thought just what we're doing.
Well, yeah, that wasn't.
Well, no, it's.
So anything new would go into the next round of changes.
And so that has to be laid out in the beginning.
Yeah, oh, exactly.
Otherwise, it'll go off into that.
Yes, good.
Then then we'll get every.
All right, well, I think that's uh, yeah, short and sweet tonight.
More into a jar.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. What's that?
Pat and Danielle, nice to your stay across the big puddle.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Like you're in a clothing shop.